Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. I now ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Barrow.
Here.
Trustee Dodd.
Here.
Trustee Kersman.
Here.
Trustee Kennedy.
Here.
Trustee Plunkett.
Here.
President Balinski.
Here, we're all here, so we have a quorum. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams software. And I will now ask Peter Skiles, our Director of Administrative Services, to explain some logistics to members of the public who may be joining us tonight.
Thank you, President Balinski. Okay, so we do have several members of the public that have joined us tonight via Microsoft Teams. And when President Balinski calls for public comment, those joining us through that means can toggle their mute status by tapping on the mute button on the meeting toolbar, which you can wake up by clicking with your mouse on the screen where the meeting video is currently taking place. Only attendees can unmute themselves. Other attendees cannot unmute each other, so just something to keep in mind as we proceed into the meeting. And just in case anybody has technical difficulties during the meeting, just a reminder that there is a means to provide public comment through the Village's YouTube Live channel. Thank you.
Everyone is now muted. I muted myself by accident as well. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a gubernatorial disaster proclamation, which was issued by Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person village governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the state amended the Open Meetings Act to permit electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Village Board during a gubernatorial disaster proclamation. So we are conducting our business tonight in compliance with the provisions of state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local access cable channel 6 and on the Internet. And I will give you the URL for the Internet, which is www.youtube.com/user/villageofwilmette/live. And if you're watching on TV, there's more interactivity online if you want to switch over. Again, URL, youtube.com/user/villageofwilmette/live. No spaces or dots or anything like that. Recording of the meeting will be archived on the Village's YouTube website, as we do with all of our televised public meetings. Now, as Mr. Skiles indicated, a remote meeting obviously requires a different mechanic for public participation. So to ensure our residents, business owners, and other interested parties have the opportunity to participate in the meeting, we have solicited public comment prior to the start of the meeting. If you sent an email to publiccomment@wilmette.com prior to the start of the meeting, your email has been provided to the board members, and it will be included in the minutes of the meeting, but it will not be read during the meeting. Members of the public who are watching the broadcast can participate during our designated public comment periods by submitting comments through the YouTube Live chat feature. I'm just gonna ask, yes, thank you, someone was getting into a car, I believe, there, and I've asked them to mute themselves. I'm sorry, I'll go back. Members of the public who are watching the broadcast can participate during our designated public comment periods by submitting comments through the YouTube Live chat feature. And a member of the Village staff will read your comment to the Village Board. For those of you who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone, at the appropriate time, I'll ask people to speak up if they'd like to make a public comment. Because of the logistical difficulties of not being together in person, I will first ask for people to identify themselves as someone who would like to address the board, and I will then assemble a list, and then call on the individuals, person by person, for their turn to speak. For people speaking during public comment, they will be allotted three minutes to address the board, just as they are during an in-person meeting. All comments from the public, regardless of how they are received, will be recorded into the meeting minutes, as we would normally do. And again, I would remind people, please keep your connections on mute until you're ready to speak. Now, before each meeting, the board receives a packet of agenda materials. These materials are also posted on wilmette.com on the Friday before our meeting. So residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the board members receive. This week's packet contains 275 pages. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, and that's Public Comment. At an in-person meeting, during public comment, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda tonight. However, as I said earlier, this meeting is being conducted remotely. So public comments, which were submitted by email in advance of the meeting, have been provided to the board members and are part of the public record of the meeting. I will now ask people who are watching on YouTube Live to submit comments for the Village staff to read. And you can find the chat window to the right of the YouTube Live video window. And while they are typing, I will ask if there's any individuals who have connected to the meeting via Microsoft Teams or via the telephone who would like to address the board on an item which is not on tonight's agenda. I'll ask people to identify themselves now.
This is James Quiamos. I would like to make a public comment to the board, if able.
You are able, and I will, let me wait and see if there's anybody else. Item not on the agenda tonight, correct?
Correct, sir.
Okay. Anyone else who would like to address the board? Please identify yourself.
Just to be clear, this is not for things to be taken off the consent agenda, is that correct?
That is, that is correct. This is, this is for items, items that are not on the agenda at all. Okay, Mr. Quiamos, it seems that you're the only one, so you have three minutes to address the board. The floor is yours.
Thank you, I'll be brief and efficient. I'm bringing to this body a situation that I've been dealing with for the past three months on my street. I've addressed it with Village Management, I've addressed it with Wilmette Police, I've addressed it with the builder. It specifically regards McIntyre Custom Homes. They've been building a project, or building a home at 829 West Linden. What they've been doing effectively is parking their fleet in the evening on our residential street. At any given time, in the evening and on weekends, construction vehicles, work vans, work trucks are basically stored there. The individuals come in the morning and work with the trucks and leave them there. I've contacted the police department, they say they cannot do anything since these vehicles are registered in Wisconsin. President Balinski, I believe I've copied you on emails that I've been dealing with the Village Manager on with the photos. The situation continues. Village Management says there's effectively nothing they can do. So it appears that there is some loophole, which allows a builder effectively to store his or her vehicles on residential streets during projects. And as I speak to you now, there is a van parked on our street constantly, Wisconsin plates, it's been sitting there for a week. So the situation in summary is, they are parking their work vehicles, not registered in Illinois, Wisconsin plated, and storing their fleet on residential streets for projects. And it seems like as if it is a loophole in the building code of the Village. And the entity is McIntyre Custom Homes. I have called him, I have spoken to him about it. He had said it would be done by the middle of August. As I speak to you now, there still is a work vehicle stored overnight and weekends on our street. That concludes my comment.
Thank you. And Mr. Bremen, I know you've been interacting here as well. This, this street does not have overnight parking restrictions, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if it did have overnight parking restrictions, obviously, there would be no vehicles allowed from 2:00 to 5:00 a.m. What, Mr. Quiamos, which street is it that you're, that the vehicle's parked on?
The 400 block of Ninth Street.
Ninth Street, okay. And there is a process, I believe, Mr. Bremen and Mr. Stein, if, if the residents of the street wanted to go, no parking, 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., they could go to the Transportation Commission, there's a process there, correct?
Correct. There is a petition processed for overnight parking restrictions.
And a certain number of residents on the street have to agree to it. It's, it's basically block to block is how the Village manages that, correct?
Correct. And this is a heavily parked street, so there's cars generally up and down the street, and in that whole neighborhood. So it's, it's, you know, it's unlikely that, you know, that would meet the petition thresholds, given the amount of neighbors that are parking on the street as well.
Okay. Well, Mr. Quiamos, I will, I will speak with the staff. I, you know, to some extent, I don't know what can be done if, if it's, if it's legal to park on the street. I understand the frustration of losing a parking spot on the street, but I will discuss it with the Village Manager and the Police Chief to see if we can come up with something more creative.
Thank you. I would recommend perhaps a code with the building or the builders, where it's, these aren't residents, they're storing their work fleet where they're working overnight and weekends. To be clear, these are not, these are not cars. They're trucks with debris in them, and I'll leave it at that, but it's, 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 it's been going on for three months, and eventually, he'll be done or she'll be done on our street, it'll be someone else's issue where they're building the house next.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, so that, Mr. Quiamos was the only person who had identified themselves. Mr. Stiles, were there, was there, were there any individuals who put a comment in via YouTube Live chat?
No comments.
Okay. So we'll move on to Item 3, which is the Consent Agenda. As described on the agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the Village Board are placed on the Consent Agenda. All items, beginning with the number 3, are on the Consent Agenda, and that consists tonight of Items 3.1 through 3.20. Items on the Consent Agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience, and is not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and will not be discussed. So I will begin by saying that I am removing Item 3.3 from the Consent Agenda, which is Approval of Temporary Use Permit 2020 TU-12 to allow Sofia Stake to construct a temporary tent at 1146 Wilmette Ave. So that item is off the Consent Agenda. So I will ask if there are any members of the audience who would like to remove any other items from the Consent Agenda. You have to unmute if you'd like to speak. Okay. Hearing none, I will ask also if there, if people are using YouTube Live chat, they can also submit a request as well, and I'll go back to that in a minute. Are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the Consent Agenda?
Yes, I'd like to remove 3.3, 3.4, and 3.6.
So 3.3 is already removed, I removed that one. So 3.4, and which other one, Trustee Kennedy?
3.6, the three, the three temporary tents in downtown Wilmette.
Okay, so Sofia, Pescadero, and Valley Lodge, 3.3, 3.4, and 3.6. Okay. So those are removed from the Consent Agenda. Mr. Skiles, was there anybody on YouTube chat that added another one to be removed?
No, President Balinski, no comments.
Okay, so may I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, and that excludes Item 3.3, 3.4, and 3.6? I believe that was Trustee Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Trustee Barrow. With the, it's been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
President Balinski.
Aye. So the motion carries, the Consent Agenda has been adopted. If you're listening in to this meeting, for an item on the Consent Agenda, it was just approved. However, as we noted, 3.3, 3.4, and 3.6 were removed from the Consent Agenda, but Land Use Committee Items 3.2, 3.5, 3.7, 3.8, and 3.9, those were all approved. So if you hear from one of those items, it was just approved, and there'll be no further discussion of those items or any of the other items on the Consent Agenda. So you are free to log off, or hang up, as the case may be, but of course, you're more than welcome to watch the rest of the meeting as well. So next item on the agenda is Item 4, Report of Officers, and we will start with a report from our Village Manager, Mr. Bremen.
No report, Mr. President.
Next up is a report from our Corporation Council, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. President.
All right, so we'll move on to Item 5, which is Report of Liquor Control Commissioner, there's no report tonight. So moving on to the Standing Committee reports, first up is the Land Use Committee with Trustee Barrow. And Trustee Barrow, I, let me, let me interrupt and just ask Mr. Stein. And, and we can always separate these later, but would it be appropriate if we're really having a discussion of the issues to make sort of an omnibus motion that covers all three of them, or should we handle them separately, or is it at the Chair of the Land Use Committee's discretion? How would you advise here?
I believe it would be at your discretion, Mr. President, or the board's discretion. If you want to take them as an omnibus motion, you can do that. I believe we can also even discuss the matter, and then make the motion even after the discussion happens, if they happen to have some conditions on one and not on another.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with any of those methods.
All right, so Trustee Barrow, I'd ask you to make a motion on Item 3.3, and depending on how the discussion goes, we may take them all together, or we may vote them separately, and I will inquire with the trustees prior to us voting, in the event that there are, you know, some yeses on some and some no's on others.
And not 3.4 and 3.6?
If you want to make the motion for all, for all three, I'd entertain that as well.
Sure. Have at it. Hold on, I need, I need refreshments. Okay. I move to approve Temporary Use Permit 2020-TU-12 to allow Sofia Stake to construct a temporary tent in the rear parking lot at 1146 Wilmette Avenue to provide covered seating area for customers. I further move to approve Temporary Use Permit Number 2020-TU-13 to allow Pescadero to construct a temporary tent on the public sidewalk in front of 1167 Wilmette Avenue for the purpose of serving dining patrons. And I further move to approve Temporary Use Permit 2020-TU-15 to allow Valley Lodge Tavern to construct a temporary tent on the public sidewalk at 1141 Central Avenue for the purpose of serving dining patrons.
All right, thank you, Trustee Barrow. Is there a second? That was Trustee Plunkett. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Here's how we're gonna run this one. First, I'm gonna ask the staff to give us some background here, explain the permits, explain the locations, explain how ongoing regulation will be handled here. And then we're gonna field Q and A from the trustees for the staff, from Mr. Bremen, Mr. Adler, Mr. Stein. We'll then move on to public comment, and those who like to comment would get their three minutes. And then discussion and voting. I see that there are some of the applicants in the meeting, and in the event that we have any questions for them, we can certainly ask them. But let's start with the staff, get our questions answered by the staff, and then we can move on from there. So I'll turn it over, I believe, to Mr. Bremen at this point.
Yes, thank you. So this is certainly an unusual situation for us to have this many temporary use tent permit applications on an agenda. And we should expect more forthcoming after this meeting. As the board knows, you know, we've tried to be as flexible as we can with our businesses, particularly our restaurants, as they've really struggled through the pandemic. So, you know, we've allowed expanded outdoor dining, we've amended our liquor regulations, we've addressed curbside pickup, and we've also allowed other tents to be put up throughout the community without temporary use approval, given the nominal impact they may have had on the neighbors, and the fact that they weren't at all enclosed, but helped facilitate business. Now, as we're moving into the winter months, there are COVID considerations and restrictions to ensure proper health protocols are put in place, and it's certainly appropriate that all these tents come forward for Village Board approval. I do want to note tonight that the board's action is simply to vote whether or not that the Village should issue a permit for these tents at these locations. Staff will then review the permits for compliance with building and fire codes, as well as with COVID-19 safety protocols. While we don't have a certified health department, Cook County is the health department that has jurisdiction over Wilmette, and we would first look to them for the COVID requirements. You know, specifically, I think the biggest one is, you know, whether a tent would be fully enclosed or partially enclosed. So we are awaiting guidance from Cook County in that regard. Absent Cook County guidance, we would look to the state. Absent state guidance, we would then look to another certified health department in our area, whether that be the city of Chicago, Evanston, or Skokie. Just for reference purposes for the board and for the restaurants, we did include samples of the Chicago and Skokie guidelines, which do differ in some regard in our additional agenda materials. We have made the applicants aware of the Chicago regulations, which are more stringent than Skokie, so that we're all going into what the possible restrictions may be eyes wide open as we work through this. So we'll work through that at the staff level, and with the certified health departments to make the proper call on that before issuing the permits. Now, in regards to the downtown tents, there's three tent applications. The two at Pescadero and Valley Lodge Tavern are where their existing outdoor dining already is, and while outdoor dining doesn't require a permit approval from the Village Board, we do that administratively, a tent structure does, and that's why that's being brought to the board tonight. The Sofia Stake one is in the back of their facility, in their parking lot, where there is not currently an outdoor dining permit, and that also has to come to the board for approval from the tent standpoint. Now, it's important to note, temporary use approvals are effective for six months, they can then be extended by the board, but there is an end date in regards to them. For, you know, I think the comments we've gotten have been in regards to Sofia Stake and the proximity of the tent to the neighboring condo building on 12th Street. We've spent the last couple of days working with the applicant to try to refine the request to limit the impact on those neighbors as much as we can. The applicant did submit a amended application that was included in our additional agenda materials earlier today, which limit the operating hours Sunday through Thursday to no later than 9:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturday no later than 10:00 p.m. From a staff perspective, we see that as a fairly significant change. The previous application had stated that the last reservation would be taken at 8:30 p.m. on all days. So now there's a very clear end time, which makes enforcement of that end time much easier from the Village staff perspective, and it's, I think it really does limit the impact to the neighbors as best as we can. Now, we have a lot of experience with temporary use permits and noise issues throughout the community over time, and we've had a lot of success in remedying concerns or complaints from neighbors, and we would plan to continue to address any complaints that do arise throughout the process. And I know Sofia Stake has, you know, been very cooperative with us throughout this process, and I know we'll work well with them and with the neighbors to address any concerns that may arise as we move forward. So with that, you know, John Adler could answer any specific questions in regards to zoning districts, and Jeff and I are also available as well.
Yes, I'll open up the floor to any questions from the trustees for the staff.
I have a few questions. I took this off the consent, or asked to have it taken off the Consent Agenda because it doesn't seem to me to be a routine matter. It's new, I think, to us and, and unique to our current situation. We don't, we, we're used to having tents on a temporary basis, but not for as long as six months, and not necessarily used in this way, at least not in the, more than three decades I've lived in the Village. So I just think that it's worth educating the public on what we're doing to kind of find the right balance between the obvious and needs of the restaurants and, and the comfort and, and security of residents who live in the area. I had a couple of questions about safety that were raised, sometimes some of which were raised by people in their letters. What about fire safety if you're using heaters in these tents? Do we have good guidelines and, that we can follow to make sure that fire is not an issue? To Bremen?
Yes, so Chief Wasney has already reviewed a number of these applications, and there's requirements that will be in place to address fire safety. Nothing, no permit will be issued without the review of the chief, and without complying with fire codes and safety regulations. And we do, you know, anticipate conducting regular inspections to ensure that all the safety protocols are adhered to. So that is something we're taking very seriously.
Thank you. And, and the other safety question that occurred to me is that, I hate to bring this up, but we have an unfortunate habit of people driving into restaurants, and in some cases, injuring patrons in restaurants. I'm, I'm a little concerned that a tent is even more vulnerable to that sort of thing, when it's particularly in a parking lot where people are gonna be driving around the tent, even while it's in use. Is there any thought that's been given to protections for the people in the tent against people driving into it, or sideswiping it, or whatever?
Yeah, I, I think that's something we will certainly look at. When we review permits, we look at a site plan and make sure that the site plan is safe and makes sense. So, you know, if there's a safety issue when the plans are submitted, we would address that with the applicant, and whether they need jersey barriers or another type of barrier. The Village also has jersey barriers that were purchased for COVID purposes for outdoor dining, that, you know, depending on the location, if it's on public right of way, that may be appropriate as well.
Okay. And, and another question that was been raised by, by local residents nearby is the noise level, particularly in the case of Sofia, where you have a, a plan to put in a speaker and pipe music into the tent. I, I do recall that a few months, or maybe as much as a year ago, we had a case in which a generator was going to be located in a non-conforming portion of the property, and we, we decided to make a condition of the permit, or the variation, that they work with the staff to make sure that, that the decibel level for the neighbor didn't exceed a certain amount. Are we planning on doing something like that here, or are we just gonna rely on people to complain incident by incident?
Yeah, Jeff, can you speak to the decibel requirements in terms of the nuisance, nuisance code, and how that applies in this district, and then we can talk about what we would do in practice?
Well, the nuisance code that was referenced in the previous email does not apply in this case, because it's not in the residential district. This is the Village Code District. However, there is still a sound, commercial activities sound restriction. I believe it's 55 decibels. No matter whether it's a tent or not, no matter whether we issued this permit or not, certain commercial activities cannot go above a certain decibel level at certain times, and that would still apply. Another thing that's kind of important, I guess, is the overall nature of this permit, which I answered probably a lot of your questions, Trustee Kennedy, is, is that this permit, specifically the code says this permit does not override or substitute any other section of the Village Code. So those fire codes, those building codes, all these sound nuisance codes, they all apply no matter what. We were not permitting those away. So they still essentially apply, and the fact is, what we're talking about here is whether a tent can be erected or not, and that's really what it comes down to. If we say yes, a tent's gonna be erected, then, as Mike said, or as Mr. Bremen stated, that we go through a process, going through a site plan, determining, making sure that all the safety requirements are met, especially fire code, safety requirements, if there's gonna be heaters, and those would apply even inside a building. So they, and I, I believe there's a little different standard for a tent than a building, but they would still apply. So all these things that are being brought up are absolutely going to apply, and I think it's important that, that, I agree with you, that it's important that the public understand that.
Thank you. I, I think it is important, and I'm assuming that it operates a little, as you said, a little differently in the case of a, a structure that is temporary and not as solid as a building. So I just want to make sure that people understand that we take that into account when we're enforcing these standards.
Right, the tents must be constructed of a certain fire retardant material, however, it's not the same kind of fire rating it would have in cement and, 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 but because of that, then there's certain other requirements of fire extinguishers that need to be put in there, as well as ingress egress, people to get out in case somebody does that.
The next question I have related to use of the public sidewalks, will we, will these tents be such that pedestrians will not be impeded or have to walk in the street because of the tents at, in front of Valley Lodge and Pescadero?
Yes, we, we would not permit a sidewalk to be blocked simply for ADA purposes, we need to allow that access, so that'll be a requirement that the sidewalk access is maintained.
Okay, thank you. One other issue that came up in some of the comments related to the idling of trucks in the place where they didn't normally idle, because the tent would be disrupting where they would normally make deliveries. Is there anything that we can do with a matter of just consensual agreement between the parties to, to make that a little bit better than it is currently for the residents?
Yeah, I, I think general noise complaints have come out somewhat unrelated to the tent application from some of the neighbors, and, you know, we certainly in the past, and we will in this instance, you know, work with the business owner and the neighbors to see if we can make that situation better, whether it's garbage or it's truck deliveries. I mean, we're, we're still in the downtown, and, you know, I think we're cognizant of that, that there is gonna be noise, given that this is a business activity. But, you know, if we can come up with some creative ways that are not adverse to the business, we would certainly work with them on that. And in terms of truck access, you know, if that is impeded by a tent, now we would need to know where those trucks are going as part of our permit review to make sure that they're, they're going to the appropriate place that makes the most sense for all parties.
Thank you. That's, it's been very helpful, and I, and I think this has been helpful to the residents of the Village as well, to know that we're on top of this, and that we, we're not just throwing these tents up without consideration. So thank you very much.
Right, and just to reiterate, Mr. Bremen, all the appropriate COVID-related protocols will continue to be followed as well, and the, and the specifics relating to winter outdoor dining, because there's been a whole bunch of folks that have been very concerned about how this works and how it works safely, because we want to, want to sort of be right there, both supporting the businesses, but also supporting the public health objectives.
Absolutely, and we take that very seriously. Social distancing, mask protection. Social distancing, mask requirements, sanitation practices will all have to be adhered to, and just like we're doing now, whether it's outdoor dining or indoor dining, there's no change in that regard.
Okay, any other questions from trustees? Trustee Dodd, like you're about to ask a question.
Trustee Dodd, go ahead. I have one too when you're done.
I do have a question as a follow-up to Trustee Kennedy's question. It's regarding the application for Valley Lodge, which is 3.6. I just want to make sure, in our material, and I believe it's on slide, in our material, it's on slide 62, it appears it's showing where the actual tent would be for Valley Lodge. I actually thought Trustee Kennedy's question was a good one around blocking the sidewalk and things like that, so obviously in the situation of Pescadero, it's a little bit easier to understand where they possibly are going to put that tent. But I just want to make sure I understand, if I look at this, it's 2.0, and maybe this is a question for John Adler, but if I look at the tent for Valley Lodge, is that showing me that this tent would be past the sidewalk, closer to, I guess that's Central Avenue, would only seat four tables? I just want to make sure I'm understanding that.
Yes, Valley Lodge is requesting four tables or four tops.
Four four tops. Okay, okay. And what is Pescadero requesting? And I'm sorry, maybe I should...
I believe it's six tabletops.
Okay. So each of these is actually, for both of those, then it's smaller than what their current capacity is in the summer?
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right. So that's helpful information for the residents, because it does, again, reinforce just that it's not going to block the sidewalk and things like that. So, okay, thank you.
Trustee Barrow?
Thank you, President Polanski. I want to make an observation first about protocol that you spoke to a moment ago, and then ask a question probably for Mr. Berman. I think this is a really important issue that we're talking about tonight, not simply for the diners, because clearly they're concerned, but really for all the residents that then interact with the diners. So it's really important that this be done correctly and that this be done safely. When we think about protocol, it doesn't appear that there's an awful lot to draw upon to answer the question as to what kind of tent setup is the correct one. The materials from Skokie appear to permit tents with four-sided. The materials from the city of Chicago require 50% openness. They don't say two-sided openness. It says 50% openness. And already, at least one tent, the tent for Convito, is already up and I believe running, and a tent outside of Fuel Downtown is also up and running. So these are questions that we don't really have a lot of time to be researching and coming up with an answer for. I think we need to come up with an answer for them rather quickly, and I'm totally supportive of our restaurants. They are what makes Willmet really cool. But we also really need to be really careful about the health and the safety issues here. So I'm concerned about where the village staff will be going to find out the correct protocols for something like this, when the two examples that we have are as wildly different as can be. Incidentally, the one from Skokie worries me hugely. I truly hope that that's never presented in Willmet. But my question then for Mr. Berman is, once you and your staff have reviewed this, whether it be Chicago, Skokie, or somewhere else, will you be coming back to the board with a set of recommendations, procedures, protocols, standards, whatever, for more formal approval? What happens next, in other words? Thank you.
Sure, I think the easy answer is that we have to file the Cook County guidelines because they're the jurisdictional health authority for Willmet. So we will be reaching out to the Cook County Department of Public Health right away to see if they have guidance. If they do not have guidance in place, we would then default to the state. And interestingly enough, the Skokie guidelines were recently amended based on communications from the state, which said in Phase Four, they are allowing those fully enclosed tents, and that's through the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. I think we would want to confirm that with the Illinois Department of Public Health, that that would be the case. But there was an email that was forwarded to us today from the Skokie staff in that regard. So, you know, we have to follow the guidance and direction of those certified health departments who are the experts in this area. So our intent wasn't necessarily to bring it back to the board because we are hamstrung in that regard. You know, if we don't have guidance from the state or the county, then, you know, we would figure it out from there, but it looks like there isn't some indication from the state of initial guidance, but we'll certainly be following up the Cook County Department of Public Health expeditiously to see where they're at on that.
Let me follow up then. So the city of Chicago, because it has its own, I gather, health department, it can promulgate its own standards?
Correct.
And is there anything, then, that would prevent the village of Willmet from adopting a standard that was stricter than that set forth by Cook County or the state of Illinois?
Jeff's going to take that one.
Yeah, Trustee Barrow, so the interplay between the county and the village when it comes to public health departments, as Mike said, is we have to defer to the county public health department. Let's assume, as things are now, that there is no, that there are no regulations from the county. The village could create its own conditions on these permits. It can create its own village-wide conditions under its emergency declaration. We've done exactly that with the face covering requirements and social distancing requirements, but obviously we follow the state, but those are our own requirements as well. So we would have the opportunity to do that. What we could not do is do something lesser than what Cook County or the state has allowed.
But then to follow up, if I understand you, you're saying we could do more. We could require something more stringent than, say, four sides is okay.
And this is a zoning land use matter, and so yes, we have the authority to do that.
And Trustee Barrow, I'm sorry, to your point, that's why we made the restaurants aware of the Chicago guidelines. There is some validity to that and where they're coming from, and from a staff perspective, we wanted to make sure they were aware that that may be a likely outcome of where this ends up as we work through this with the county.
Well, I can, I'll just speak for one trustee who will be very concerned if the result of this process is a standard that's, candidly, that's lax in, what I believe anyway, is lax in its healthcare, particularly if we have the ability to do more. So that said, I for one would like to have this matter come back to the board before rules and regulations adopted by the staff become the rule in Willmet.
Yeah, and Trustee Barrow, I guess I would suggest that we wait until the staff reaches out to Cook County and see what they say, and the manager can distribute that to the trustees, and should there be any concerns, the matter can be brought to the board. Because my suspicion is that the county has been following the city on many of its recommendations, and that there's a high, I mean, we're not the only community. There's only, you know, just for, remind people, there's only four, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Berman, there's only four communities in the entire state that have their own certified health departments. And it happens that two of them are our neighbors, Evanston and Skokie, along with Chicago, but everybody else relies on the county. So almost every community in suburban Cook County is going to be looking to Cook County's health department to give them guidance on this. So personally, I would be surprised if they didn't provide any guidance. And again, frankly, they've generally been following the city on guidance on things like face coverings and the like, so. And just again, to your point, we actually, you may recall, we actually instituted face coverings in the village prior to the state mandating them. So that's certainly an example of us sort of taking a lead on that in advance of sort of other regulations, so.
No, my suggestion wasn't intended to be that it formally be brought to the board in a meeting setting like this, simply that there be trustee and board engagement before this becomes
Absolutely.
...our rule. That's all.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Berman.
Okay, we'll certainly keep the board updated on that and seek feedback as we move forward through the process.
All right, other questions for the staff from the trustees? It's a little harder, but I'm getting sort of good at looking at the screen at people's faces. Not quite as the same as in a meeting. Okay, so as I said, I would open it up for public comment after, at this point. So at this point in time, individuals who would like to address the board, I'd ask you to unmute yourself and identify yourself, and then I will walk through each individual separately and offer them their three minutes. So if you'd like to address the board, please unmute yourself and identify yourself.
This is Richard Ramlo at 724 12th Street.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ramlo, did you say?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board?
Yeah, this is Candace Barachi Warner, owner of Convito Cafe and Market.
Okay, you're on the list as well now. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Okay. And also, for those of you who are watching on YouTube, please feel free to type into the chat window at this point in time, and when we're done with the individuals who are speaking live, we will move to the chat window. So, Mr. Ramlo, you have three minutes. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm just a little concerned, though, because my remarks are prepared based on what we thought was the original permitting, and it sounds like some changes have been made. So I don't know whether I'll be making comments about things that don't matter anymore. Is there a way for me to understand what kind of compromises were made in the last couple of days to the plans before I start?
I think Mr. Berman identified them. The time changes was the key one, right?
That's it, they didn't, so the number of seats have not been reduced?
They have not.
Okay, thank you. Well, so besides being an owner in this, in the Village Center condos, I also have the privilege of serving the residents as president of the Board of Managers for the building. Lucky me. So as such, I represent a variety of views, but it's clear that a majority of residents that care enough to write are opposed to this proposal. My own views are less cut and dried, but in the end, they're still opposed to granting this permission as written. As I was composing this, I have received 14 letters from residents in our building, and while one owner is in favor of the proposal, the remainder are against it. We think that there are people who will support this. It's a relatively new restaurant. There's a lot of good things about the restaurants in our community. The board's got a lot to consider here. But just to restate, the direct arguments against this from the letters, the potential noise of 80 diners at peak hours plus the normal din of the cleanup and preparation for the next day's service, additional ambient noise from dinner music, time requests that extends the noise potential into bedtimes for children and other residents, other general decreases in the ability of our residents to use their decks and balconies without competition from this change, whether it be from sound, sight, or smell. Some describe this as quality of life infringements. There's an increased potential for vermin, whether it be more squirrel activity, crows, gulls that discover the feast, or possibly even rodents. You've already spoken about the potential fire hazard and the open-ended nature of the permit. Even though it's a six-month permit, it would not strike me as odd that it would be automatically continued if COVID is still going on. That certainly is the request, and we think more than six months is not a reasonable exception. Some have written that this used to be in conflict with the specific ordinance of the village code. I don't know, I'm not an attorney, but I'd be interested if the village attorney could speak to that specific point raised in the letters and the ability of the board to simply vote to waive that requirement. Our residents are generally supportive of an expansion of the restaurant in front of their own building. This would necessitate restricting traffic on Willmet Avenue, but would certainly affect residential living much less if properly laid out, and I suspect that space for 80 patrons will tax either side of the building. Not mentioned in any of the letters is the potential precedent that this creates. Our building has been made aware of two other restaurants that would like to do something similar, with one wanting to use space in the bank parking lot directly adjacent to our building, and we want to know how the village is going to balance our rights and needs with those of the other restaurants if this permit is granted. It seems unlikely that you can say no to the second permit just because Sophia arrived first, making our situation even more difficult. We have empathy for the owners of this restaurant. They certainly could not have guessed what they would be facing when they decided to open Sophia. The limited indoor seating allowed now cannot possibly support a full-service restaurant operating at their price point. They have creditors and employees and are part of Willmet's larger economy, and the vibrant restaurant scene developed in Willmet over the last several years is good for all of us and has not occurred at the expense of residents, to my knowledge. But at the end of the day, they are a business with the inherent risks of success and failures often outside of their control. They're potentially rewarded for success because the risk of failure is high. It is hard to conceive of that same standard being applied to the property rights of residential owners. Even in these difficult times, it's a significant overreach to suggest that a tent with 80 seats across the alley from a 36-unit condo building is a prudent, balanced proposition that is mindful of the concept of being a good neighbor. It's hard to think of words that are not becoming cliche in describing what we have all endured over the last six months. Yet the pandemic goes on, and we have been forced to observe our values in action. What are the values of our village that this decision will exhibit? Will we favor commerce over maintaining an expected standard of buffering residents from business activity? That's how most people will view a decision in favor of granting this permit as its reads. As one of our owners put it, "This is unacceptable for a town that prides itself on being family-friendly." We must oppose this as currently proposed. While I cannot speak for the owners uniformly without a process where we build consensus to an opinion, the known desire of other businesses to seek other accommodations that are similar make it difficult for me to recommend any kind of alternative options to my fellow owners until we have a sense of the whole. And we thank the board for its service to our community as you wrestle how to resolve this conflict. We know it's not easy. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ramlo. Ms. Warner, the floor is yours.
Okay, I just wanted to say one thing about when you're considering rules that you're going to develop for the tents. Just to clarify, as I've been speaking with other restaurants with tents in Evanston and other places, the Pritzker rules are, I mean, the state rules and the Illinois Restaurant Association, who I follow and is a wonderful resource for all the information that is every guideline in Illinois, and it's been really helpful. So I had already, and the Chicago guidelines, which came out about the 50% of the walls being open. If, the point I want to say is the four tent, the four walls of the tent being closed, saying that that is riskier is because I think the way it's worded, if there's four sides of the tent, they're saying then it should follow the indoor guidelines, which are what they are. They're, it's worse to be inside when there's no airflow going through the seams, there's no floor on the tent, so there's air flowing up and down. There's all of those, there's more airflow than inside a brick-and-mortar indoor dining establishment. So there, in Pritzker's rules, he said if there's more than two sides of the tent are enclosed, this is considered indoors for purposes of our guidelines. And the 50% and the two sides is when, I think a lot of restaurants and/or places were just having the tent and people feeling outside, covering the rain or the shade or the sun, and therefore there wasn't the social distancing that may have supposed to be happening inside the tents that were originally put up. So the main point is just, I wanted to say, check the, when you're making your stricter or less strict, whatever considerations that the village is wanting to consider to make sure everybody's safe. I think Convito is, is doing all the social distancing and limited amount of tables in the tent, and there will be two exits, but 50% of the... and there will be two exits. But 50% of the walls being up in cold weather will make it not available to be heated, and then then, then it's not going to work probably very well. However, just to remind you, indoor dining is allowed. So I think if everyone practices the correct social distancing and masks required and all of the other issues, then that would be a way to keep everyone safe, as it is, indoor dining is allowed. So that's all I wanted to. And it seems also, I'm a little confused, but I think that Convito's consent agenda passed, but I wasn't sure because it was 3.2.
Yours did pass, yes. Yours already passed.
I was like, did it pass? Okay. So, but I appreciate everyone, yeah.
But it doesn't, it still doesn't, you know, having the tent permit passed, as Mr. Berman said, you're still subject to the rules and regulations of the village as are promulgated.
I, exactly. I just knew that at one point, I thought maybe it would be, yeah, a different situation, or people would say, forget it, take the tent down, whatever. But yes, of course, all the regulations and fire codes, and I know those are going to be changing or you'll be developing those, and that's wonderful. But I just have had a lot of conversations in the past week with many different business owners, and Amy Morton, Barn in Evanston, and different, who's, so it's been enlightening for me, too, to find out the different types of guidelines. But I wanted to remind that it is allowed to be dining inside in Illinois at a 20, at the social distancing capacity, and I think that's what a lot of the restaurants are saying. The tent is going to allow for that, but you have to make sure people are not packing people in the tent and not following all the other safety rules, is my opinion. So, but thank you for your time, and good luck with all your decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. There are, I noticed names in the participant list.
President Polinski, may I interrupt a sec? I believe Mr. Ramlo asked a question about the application of our zoning code.
Yeah, and we will go back to that.
Thank you.
I will ask Mr. Stein to answer that question, but I want to make sure I'm cleaned up on public comment, because I do see a couple of business owners, downtown business owners in the meeting, and if, again, I would offer, if anybody else would like to address the board, they certainly feel, you should feel like you're not obligated to at all, but if anybody would like to address the board, I am willing to offer them their three minutes like everyone else.
Hi, Mr. President. This is Nick Hines, one of the owners over at Pusketera in Napoleita. How are you doing tonight?
I'm doing well, thank you. Mr. Hines?
The only thing that I would like to say is that I would like to, you know, basically back up exactly what the previous, you know, the owner of Convito was saying, that, you know, if we are allowed to have the tents, and if it's, you are not allowed to have more than 50% covered, I mean, 50% of it would have to be open for ventilation. If that's what the county comes down with, we're fine, we're fine with adhering to that. The only question would be, as she had stated, whether or not we would be able to use and adhere to the indoor dining requirements of, you know, the six feet, the 25%, all the other, if we had, adhere to all the indoor dining requirements and guidelines, if we would possibly be allowed to. I'm not sure if, if that's going to be answered today, or if that's also going to be part of the, of the guidelines, you know, put down from the County Health Commission. So, that was just more of that we would be willing to do whatever would be necessary to adhere to whatever guidelines are put forth, but if we, if that would even be an option later on.
Yeah, that will be, that will be, those will be regulations that are to be promulgated from the village staff, and hopefully from the county health department, their guidance, which will just be passed along by the staff.
Okay.
Okay.
We appreciate everyone listening and trying to help out the downtown businesses, because this is, this is really, this is really going to be helpful, as well to our ongoing success and viability. So, thank you much.
Okay, so anyone else? And if not, I'll move on to Mr. Stein, and he can answer Mr. Ramlo's question about the applicability, having speaking trouble problems tonight, the applicability of the particular part of the village code that was referenced in some of the emails.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, the section that is being discussed or that was brought up is under the nuisance section, not necessarily under the zoning code. And it very clearly does not apply to this scenario, because what it says is that commercial activity can't be within 50 feet of a residential district if they're going to have some sort of impact. These, this, all, all these tent applications are not within 50 feet of a residential district. This is the Village Center District. It's a downtown district. It may have some residential uses, but it is not applicable. This section is not applicable to this particular set of things. So that is why I was able to make that opinion.
But as you stated, as you stated earlier, the restrictions on noise complaints and other nuisance, those still are valid, and the village staff will respond to those concerns should they arise. This is not, this is not build your tent and do whatever you want. That's not what we're talking about here tonight.
No, absolutely. What, what the code section that would otherwise not allow this to happen at all, wouldn't even allow a tent, or any commercial activity, whether there's a tent or not. And that code provision does not apply in this particular case, because our zoning districts are different. This is not a residential zoning district.
Right. It's the downtown Village Center District, which is, which is designed for commercial activity, in essence.
Correct.
I think I understand. If I could just quickly ask, so I can explain it to my residents?
Absolutely.
So what you're saying is because our building is in a zone that is not residential, even though it's a residence, it's not treated as such?
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Think of 611 Green Bay. It's half residential, half commercial. It's the same building, but it's a, that's not a residential district. There's some residential use, but it's not a district.
Okay. All right. I think we're done with public comment at this point in time. Going once? Going twice? Okay. So, go back to the trustees now. Any further, first off, any further questions for the staff on the comments that were raised, or, or otherwise? Any further questions for the staff? And if there are some, we'll answer them, and if there aren't, we'll see if there's any discussion.
This is trustee Dodd. I actually had a question for one of the applicants.
Okay.
It was for the applicant for Sophia's steak. I just wanted to ask, I just was curious what their capacity is for outdoor dining right now in, along the sidewalk.
Mr. Kiefer, if you'd like to answer that question, you can unmute yourself and you can answer it.
Hi, Kathy. Brian Kiefer. Right now, we're seeing, thanks to the good graces of our neighbors, about 85 to 90 people outside.
Okay.
So our neighbors have permitted us to put our tables in front of their businesses when they close.
Okay.
So we went from basically five tables of four to 23 tables, some fours, some twos, but I'd say about 85.
Okay.
Sort of similar amount to what we were proposing underneath the tent.
Mr. Kiefer, sort of casually, I was talking with one of your business neighbors, and they were very complimentary of how considerate you were of them in all respects. So, some feedback for you.
It's good to hear. We don't want to disappoint our neighbors, because they've been really, really generous. They've made the difference between us paying our bills and paying our mortgage, and paying our employees, and keeping our people employed, and not. And that's, I think, what this is all about.
And then, I'm sorry, I have one more question, just since it, so people, will they, will customers get into the tent by walking through your restaurant?
That's correct.
Okay.
Pretty much the same path they would take to get to the restrooms.
Yep.
So it's a few more steps to get to the parking lot in the back.
Okay.
You know, we're really afraid of what will happen if we go back to phase three. That's really going to be, you know, and I think it's an eventuality when you see what's happening with the schools. We will go, I think, as go the universities and schools. As Loyola's closing and opening and closing, and, you know, Notre Dame is going through its changes, and the other universities are going through their changes and sending people home. It's a very real possibility that we're going to be struggling, and all of our guests are asking us, "What the heck are you guys going to do in the winter?" So we're hoping that this is the answer.
Yeah, and so far, we've been lucky with the public schools here in Willmet. District 39 has done a nice job so far, and Loyola did reopen. They closed, and then they reopened. So, cross-venture as well when it opens.
And just to, you know, to review the rules as they are now, the city of Chicago has a 25% rule. We have a six-foot rule. And I think we've done a really good job of working with, making sure that our guests, and of course, our employees all are wearing masks all the time. I hesitate to visit tables, because I'm afraid, I don't want to make people put their masks back on, but it, the compliance has been really smooth. During the day, I sell commercial insurance, and I've had some of my clients report major pushback from their guests, even violence. So, you guys got ahead of the curve and introduced the mask or, or requirement really early, and hats off to you guys for doing that.
Okay, other questions for the staff, or since we've opened it up, Mr. Kiefer as well? All right, so discussion, if there's any discussion that, any comments, further comments that people would like to make?
I'll just briefly, I think we're going to have a period of time here where, you know, we're all trying to figure this out, and we're all trying to support our restaurants, and this is a time of change for everybody, and it's going to be new for everybody. And this is temporary. So I think, you know, as we work through these restrictions, and we learn what other towns are doing, and what Cook County's guidance is, you know, we will figure it out. But I think, you know, as we kind of navigated through a lot of this already, this is, this is the next step that we need to navigate through.
Yeah, that's well put, trustee Plunkett. And I would also say, Mr. Ramlo, your, your, your concerns and your neighbors' concerns are heard by us. We are in sort of very, I mean, it's not an understatement to say unprecedented times right now, and, you know, there is a balance, but we're, I think we're trying to strike that balance, and we're certainly not, again, offering up a blank check to any restaurateurs to put up a tent and do whatever they want, and be negligent in their neighborly responsibilities, let's just say. So, your concerns have been heard. I think we'll be able to manage this on a go-forward basis via the normal staff process and our normal ongoing sort of regulation and oversight of our businesses.
I'd just like to add one thing, you know, to Mr. Kiefer, just, you know, obviously, we've heard lots of positive things about your restaurant, and we wish you a lot of success, and we all hope we don't go back to phase three. You know, as you continue, and, you know, I do also want to acknowledge the residents who have sent us some emails and Mr. Ramlo's comments. And so I would just encourage you, Mr. Kiefer, to continue to speak to the residents at 7, you know, 712, I believe it's 712 12th Street, or 742, maybe. You know, just, they're customers of your store as well, of your restaurant as well. And so this, these, these things work out the best when there is, you know, obviously, not all the residents there are going to be happy, but these things work out best when the businesses and the residents nearby try to find a way to work together and come up with a compromise. So, and, you know, obviously, you're doing that, and I'm sure not trying to imply you're not. I'm just encouraging you to continue to, as you're deciding whether to fit one or two more tables in, or whatever, as you go through this, to, you know, have that as in the back of your mind, because sometimes those small little things maybe have a large effect in terms of how people treat it, and I'm sure you'll do that, so.
We are in, we are in the hospitality business and not the hostility business. So, I hope we don't lose our way on that, and we will respect our neighbors, and we'll give, we'll give plenty of thought to everything that Mr. Ramlo said. I get it. If I was living in that building, I would probably be having the same misgivings.
Yep.
Other trustees? Okay, so I'm going to ask if there's any trustee who objects to us voting on all three of these items as one omnibus motion, as trustee Barrow made the motion, to let me know. And if that's the case, we will separate them and vote on them separately. But if there's no, no request, so in other words, if your vote's the same on all three, yes or no, there's no reason to separate them. But if there is a request and people would like to differentiate, please let me know, and we will separate the motions.
I don't object to doing it omnibus.
Anybody else? All right, so, where are we here? We're just about ready to call. So, Mr. Stein, you're comfortable as well with the omnibus motion?
Absolutely. It is appropriate.
Okay. All right, so would the clerk please call the role on the motion to approve the temporary use permits, 2020 TU 12, 2020 TU 13, and 2020 TU 15, which are items 3.3, 3.4, and 3.6 on the agenda?
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
President Polinski.
Aye. So the motion carries, the temporary use permits have been approved.
Thank you.
All right, back to trustee Barrow.
And all other items are on the consent agenda.
Okay, so we'll move on to the finance committee, which is trustee Kennedy.
Sorry, I was muted. We have item 6.21, the fiscal year 2020 financial status update. So I will turn the floor over to our capable staff.
I assume Mr. Hallgren is trying to share his screen or something.
Yes, we'll see if we have better success this time than we did last time. All right, is presentation up for everybody to view?
Yes.
All right, so tonight, we'll be going through the 2020 financial update, looking at period eight update. From an overall perspective, we have continued to see positive financial performance in a lot of our key indicators, especially our market-driven revenue sources. So we'll be going through and just doing a review of how our performance was in the month of August for revenues, how we expect that forecast to change as we continue to move forward. I will also do a review of our expenditures through period eight, and then the last part of this presentation is going to do a quick review of three of our other funds, the parking meter fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. Melinda will be taking over that portion of the presentation.
And actually, Mr. Hallgren, can I, can I interrupt you one moment here? You know, since we're talking finance, Ms. Malloy, we sold some bonds today, didn't we?
Why, yes, we did, President Polinski. And I can tell you all that it was a fantastic deal once again for the village. We were received, we had a great reception. We had over seven bidders on our deal today. We sold about 15.7 million in bonds, and we did that for a tick, so let's just talk about it in terms of the interest cost, of less than half a percent. And that's a five-year issuance that we did. So what does that mean for us? Because we talked about this before. This is the refunding of our outstanding 2010 bonds, which are currently callable this year. And in doing this deal, when we looked at it initially, we were hoping to get a little over a million, probably about a million and a half in savings, and it was mainly in our general fund, but it also is going to impact our water fund as well, but to a much lesser extent. The deal today was so good for the village that we improved that estimate. It's closer to 2 million in savings that we have received. So again, this is allowing us, these are savings that we're getting, and as we look towards additional issuances that the village is going to undertake for a variety of reasons. a variety of reasons, it allows us to layer that debt in and that's how we structured this deal. But our AAA rating that was reaffirmed yet again, that I notified the board about, again, congratulations to all of you. That is one of the reasons, one of the strong reasons why we were so well-received today.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy. I just couldn't resist. It was, I knew it was a good result and I wanted you to share it with the board and the public.
Yeah, that is terrific news. Great job, Melinda. I mean, that's awesome.
Yeah, kudos, Ms. Malloy. That's amazing.
Yeah.
Thank you all. And but one of the things is, as we go through this financial review, I just, I have to stress again, this is one of the things that the rating agency, again, gives us a lot of kudos for, that the board is as engaged as what you are, that they know that on a monthly basis, we're having these discussions. So this, along with other steps that we have taken, again, has allowed us to maintain our AAA rating.
It was, it was a big question when we had our first rating agency call, you know, what's the impact of COVID? Have you quantified it? It wasn't like, what is it? It was even, have you, have you quantified it? Have you even looked at it? And obviously, as you all know, the staff has really done a nice job in that area. So that made that conversation much easier.
No, I think everybody should be, I compliment the staff as well. I mean, terrific job getting what you've done through what we've gone through the last six months, plus the budget process, the last few years, to maintain that reserve at the level that was, which was hard to do and we pushed you, but great job. It worked out.
Okay, we'll go back to Mr. Hallgren now. Sorry, Eric, didn't mean to interrupt, but couldn't resist.
No problem. We're going to try to weave that in here somehow, but you got, you got to the important stuff right away. So when we were looking through our revenues, in the month of August, we performed slightly below budget. But the primary driver of our underperformance comparatively to budget was really driven by property tax dispersments. Originally, property taxes are due in August. These dollars, Cook County shifted that due date out until October. So while we received a lot of funds in July for property tax payments, it looks like that there was a component of our property tax dispersments that will be just delayed until the month of October. On the other side of it, we did perform around 15 to 17% both of our, above both of our scenario projections, which really speaks to a lot of our other revenue sources, our market-driven ones, whether it's real estate transfer tax, our sales tax, our local use tax, or our permits, continue to perform better than expected in both of our scenario one and scenario two. So this is just a graphical depiction of that, of those last couple of statements. Our actuals for the month of August fell in between that range of our initial budget projections and then both of our scenarios. We do expect that most of the, that all those funds that are related to property taxes will be dispersed in the month of October to be made whole on our property tax levy. But so far through the five months that we have been doing projections related to the COVID impact, we have fallen below budget. We had a budget of around 14 and a half million dollars. We've received, been in a receipt of about 13 million dollars, but these have far exceeded both of our scenario projections. So as we look forward for the remaining four months of the year, we're really trying to gauge what the impact is going to be. We continue to strive to be conservative in our approach towards, towards the remaining impact for the remainder of the year. So if you look at some of our key indicators, so in the fourth quarter, we're still looking to take a 40% reduction in home real sales tax. We're still looking to take a 25% reduction in permits, even though our year-to-date activity hasn't necessarily been at that level. That last column is looking at our percent reduction in our overall revenues. So there's a couple of things I want to highlight here. The two revenue sources that really have not performed well and continue to not perform well are fuel tax and hotel tax. So we have continued to keep those reductions at a significantly higher level, just because they continue to underperform comparatively to budget. But the other one that is really the highlight for us, I think, is looking at our real estate transfer tax. As opposed to looking at a reduction in annual revenues, we're actually expecting to see a higher-than-expected, a higher-than-budget figure in our real estate transfer taxes. The month of August was one of the highest sales months that the villages had on record. And at this point in time, we have outpaced our 2019 year-to-date figures associated with real estate transfer tax. So this has really been a highlight and really indicative of the strength of that real estate market. So looking towards what we have done to make adjustments to our revenue projections for the remainder of the year, there's four areas where we have made upward adjustments. The first one is looking at our grants and contributions. This is because we have, we have started to, or in the process of working with Cook County on our cares reimbursement. The village is expecting to receive around $198,000 in funding through Cook County, through FEMA for COVID-related expenses. We expect to take receipt of this additional $200,000 by the end of the year. Increases in income tax as well as sales tax are both related to preliminary information received from the Department of Revenue. We know what our expected receipts will be for the month of September, and those both continue to have really positive performance, especially in the sales tax space related to local use tax, which overperforms comparatively to last year's figures. And this is really driven by online sales. The last area where we are increasing or adjusting our revenue projections up are in permits. Last month and the prior month, we had started to see a trend that building permits were exceeding our, both of our scenarios. This was the third month of overperformance comparatively to the scenarios. So we made the decision to increase that revenue projection by, for 5% in both scenarios. Looking at our overall revenue outcomes, the number continues to tick back up. Our general fund budget is at $34 million. And again, while we are still below budget comparative on our year-to-date, that number continues to improve on a monthly basis, which is really a positive sign for our local economy. When we were having discussions back in June, we had revenue projections that were in the 30 to 31 million dollar mark. We've improved that position by roughly one and a half million dollars between the two scenarios since that time. Again, our, our performance here, our year-to-date revenues are down 5.5% compared to budget and we expect our year-end estimate revenues to be down anywhere from 4.5% to 6% depending on the scenario. But that is a significantly better position than what we had looked at maybe three to four months ago. So when we move over to the expense side, expenses perform three, around 4% below budget in August. Overall, expenses continue to be down comparatively around 8%. As we've mentioned in prior discussions, a lot of this underspend is associated with capital projects and purchases. So as an example, we expected to take receipt of our new police squad cars somewhere in the middle part of the year, so July, June, July. But due to production issues, we are now not expecting to take receipt of those until closer to the latter part of the year. So while we, they didn't expect as initially budgeted, we have shifted those expenses out to the last three periods of the year so that they will impact our overall expenses. Looking at our expense assumption updates, we've gone over through most of these previously. We expect to continue to have savings in personnel associated with regular time and overtime. We continue to see savings in our operating expenditures related to automotive expenses and training. We've had bid-saving pricing, we've deferred capital projects, and then we are also having savings associated with the hotel tax rebate. And the last part that we just want to touch on here is really, we've approved $530,000 for the economic grant program. At this point through the year, we've spent $276,000. If we do not have a second round of grants, that differential would be additional savings for the 2020 budget. So looking at our expense outcomes, our projection through the end of the year is looking to save around $900,000 comparatively to our initial budget. And then the last, the last part before I turn it over to Ms. Malloy to go through the, the other funds is really looking at our reserve projections for the general fund. We added a little bit of more information in here. When we started our 2020, we had around a 42% reserve level comparatively to expenses. We had a planned drawdown as part of the budget to provide funding towards our pensions, our capital equipment replacement, as well as funds for our engineering programs. So we had originally expected to bring our reserve level down about 4% to 38%. Based upon the positive revenue performance, as well as the savings that we've seen on the expense side, we're now expecting to see a reserve level that ranges from around 35.5% to 36.5% depending on scenarios. This is a vast improvement from when we thought we were potentially dip below 30%, but we continue to be on the right track.
And if I can jump in here real quick, this gives us a lot of flexibility as we move into our FY 2021 budget process. Our long-term plan was to continue to draw down our general fund reserve for our pension amortization phase-in. That's almost, you know, that's another half million next year, as well as our comprehensive plan next year and our SURF. So this, these numbers here that we're seeing in scenario one and scenario two are going to give us a lot of flexibility to maintain those commitments and still be able to, you know, handle COVID revenue dips should they continue and continue to meet our 30% goal. As the board will recall, our policy does not require 30% reserve, but our goal is to maintain that for our bond rating. So this is really good news as we move into October and we start to look at our next year budget.
So, so Mike and Eric, to that point actually, and I just thought of this, but and again, I think you guys have done a terrific job. I think the model's working. I think we've got a strong handle on it. But as we get busy going into the calendar year-end and focused on the 21 budget, which will be focused on 12 months, how do we, how can we make sure that we, we keep our, sort of our short-term, how can you continue this model, right? Everything I look at it slides, it ends in December and I don't want to, I want to make sure we don't think like, we just got to get to December because January 1st is going to be here and we're sort of in that 13-week period now. So is there a way that we can sort of continue this, even if, without a budget being approved and use sort of historical numbers, just so we keep an eye on it and, or keep, keep this discussion going on? What, what could happen? Making sure we stay in front of like, sort of the downside cases of what could happen? And I only thought of it because of what Mr. Kiefer said 10 minutes ago. If, if the state goes to phase three and they have to shut down, I mean, what are sort of the downsides? And just keeping, I just worry about the first quarter. And so how can we stay on top of that? And, or I would challenge you, think about how you put some numbers in there to, to show us as this model continues to evolve. It's always, it's a live model. Does that make sense?
That, that makes a lot of sense and we'll absolutely do that. We're, we're working on our revenues this week for our 21 budget, so we'll have a good baseline to work from on those assumptions. And I was going to bring this up at the end, but I'll address it now. For our October COVID financial update, rather than do it at the regular board meeting, we're going to roll it into our budget workshop so that we can see how it's impacting the current year as well as next year's budget. So that'll be a good transition into thinking, you know, longer term than just the 12 months. So that point is well taken.
Yeah, and I can't remember, it's dating, but on your revenue slide, why did, why did revenues outpace budget in March? Was that just a strong Christmas or holiday season?
We, I'm going to jump in really quick. One of the things, we started the year with a really strong real estate transfer tax collection. So January, February, and March were really strong months for us and then we started to hit the decline. We started the year, it's showing you, we were, we were tracking really well.
Yeah.
And then COVID hit.
Right. Yeah, so the only thing, and again, I bring it up just because the first quarter, we've got a lot of stormwater phase-two going on then. So again, you got a handle on it. I just want to make sure we don't think December's the finish line, because hopefully there's no finish line in this model.
Very good. We'll do that moving forward.
So if a picture's worth a thousand birds, then this picture's going to tell you about thousands of parking transactions that did not occur starting in April. So the parking meter fund, we haven't really talked about before, but I don't think this is going to surprise you to think that we weren't having any transactions occurring at the CTA and metro stations. So this is an item that we're looking at right now. Although this, this graph tells you what is occurring, it's not going to be a shock then to know that we're down 60% in our revenue compared to 2019. And we are going to need to look at a way to support this fund for the end of the year because there's still our expenses that are associated with it, even if the parking isn't occurring. So we just wanted to make you aware of it and we'll talk some more about this in the subsequent meetings like Mike was just referring to right now. So as Eric goes to the next slide, I get to tell you a slightly better story. So one of the things I'd like you to focus on here is the projected ending reserve. So if you notice where we started the year, which was just a little over 2 million, even we had projected the budget, we were going to grow the reserve slightly. We still are in that sort of a mode, not as much as what we had initially anticipated at the time of the budget, but we're still going to grow the reserve by about a little over 200,000. And I'll just say as an aside, because we've spent quite a bit of time talking about it, the reason why revenues right now are not coming in as strong as what we had anticipated was because of the refinement of the stormwater data. So that was one of the items. And then with the implementation of the detention and institutional credits that were discussed earlier this year, those both impacted the revenues then that we thought for, that we would get in the sewer fund. What is performing almost at budget right now is our regular sewer revenues. And that's going to make more sense when we go to the next slide, when we look at the water fund, which is even better story for us to look at. So we know that the sewer revenue is tied to water consumption. And if you look here at the water fund, you're going to see that revenues look like they're performing fairly well, just a little bit under. And I'll talk about why that's, that's under in just a moment. But I wanted to let you know that in the last several years, we seem to have a broken record where I was coming back to you and telling you that water consumption was down. This is a year where it's actually meeting more of our expectations. Fantastic news. So that's why sewer revenue looked, it's regular sewer revenue is looking well. Both our residential and our wholesale in particular is performing very well. The only decline that we have in the waterfront right now, and it shouldn't be a big shock, has to do with water meter sales and some of the water connections. Those aren't performing as well as what we would expect. But the great story here is that the reserve looks to be improving even more than what we anticipated when we put the budget together. So the last slide that we're looking at tonight is one of the best slides that we have this evening and I'm hoping that we're ending this on a good note then.
So, and, and Ms. Malloy, the third bullet suggests that we haven't yet got all the dry summer water bills into these numbers yet. Is that, is that the way I should interpret that?
You're absolutely correct. So what happened is when we were projecting, we know that we always look at the wholesale and how it's performing and that is doing exceptional. So we know that we're going to see that flow through our residential sales, which there's always a two-and-a-half-month lag. So I expect this year that we are actually probably going to meet our budget estimate with our water sales this year.
Any, any questions for the staff? Looked again, a very thorough, detailed presentation and we appreciate that. Looked again, a very thorough, detailed presentation, and we appreciate that. All right, Trustee Kennedy, I believe that is the extent of your agenda tonight.
I believe so. So I pass the baton.
All right, Trustee Dodd, Administration Committee?
Yes, all items were covered on consent. I would just like to say, give one brief, I'd like inform the board of one thing, which is we did hold our fourth and final Administration Committee meeting on the Boards and Commissions last Friday. So Trustee Barrow and Trustee Sullivan are on that commission, a committee, and we will, so we expect that there will be a report to the board on our final recommendations in terms of Boards and Commissions, and the Human Relations Commission, the Housing Commission, and the focus of those that should occur at our, at our next board meeting, which I believe would be October 14th. I believe that's right, if I have the date right.
I think we have the extra week in between meetings this, this, at this time.
Yeah, you're right. So it's three weeks from now, it'd be the 13th. Sorry about that. So I just wanted to let the board know that, that will be coming in the packet for our next board meeting and to be on the lookout for that, so.
Thank you. Trustee Dodd, Municipal Services, Trustee Sullivan.
All items approved on consent.
Public Safety, Trustee Kersman.
No report.
And Judiciary, Trustee Plunkett.
All items were on consent.
There are no reports from our special committees. Item 7 is new business, and there's no new business to discuss. Item 8 is adjournment, may have a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
That's Trustee Kennedy, and is there a second?
Second.
Uh, it was Trustee Dodd got in under the wire there. So we are in a remote meeting, so I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion to adjourn.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Barrow.
Aye.
Trustee Dodd.
Aye.
Trustee Kersman.
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy.
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett.
Aye.
And President Polinsky.
Aye, so motion carries. We stand adjourned at 9:03.